Mm-hmm.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the November thirteenth special meeting of the Normal Public Library Board. Um, present, we have Janie Williams, um, Sherelle Harris, Ralph Bloom, Laurel Peterson, Alex Knopf, Geraldo Williams, and um, Patty Breschah, who is on the phone here. And um, so do we have anyone present for public comments?
No public comments.
Any additions to the agenda? Okay, um, and then our one um, main agenda item for today is to discuss the operating and capital budgets, which will be due for their first round of review with um, before our next board meeting. They're going to be due, I think, in the next week, I think, uh, within the week, so. So Sherelle, I'm gonna hand it over to you to go through the budgets.
Okay, so I just want to begin by saying that I could not get into my computer. Um, it's been since Thursday, so I couldn't um, really do what I needed to do. However, I put together an Excel sheet like I did yet um, last year. So you guys will still be able to see um, the requests.
And again, I say um, that's ridiculous because you should be, that should be a priority for you to get on your computer, especially a library director. I'm just gonna repeat that again. That's crazy.
It, it's, I did, you know, put in a call to IT, our staff here knows about it. So hopefully, they will be able to fix it by tomorrow. And um, I have a party to speak with Tom in the finance department tomorrow morning because I guess I was not the only person who was having issues um, with munis. So um, so we'll see.
That is.
With Dawn being out, it's just, it's been difficult, you know, trying to get all of the stuff together. But that said, I think we, I think I'll be able to get through this. So I'm going to do a share screen. And can everyone see the screen?
Can you repeat for me what Sherelle said because I could not understand any of it? I couldn't hear it.
Um, Sherelle basically said that she had, she's had a lot of trouble with her computer and um, and so have some others.
Uh-huh, okay.
So just let her know that's why we're, oh, she can't see, but we're doing the um, I'm doing an Excel version. Um, as opposed to the munis version.
She's sharing a screen.
Okay.
Okay, so basically, um, so we'll start with the personnel issue. We all, we, we requested a custodian last year, however, that request was denied. Um, per our last meeting, we decided that we would request two custodians um, in anticipation of the upcoming renovations. And even just, you know, watching now, we're down to one full-time, we have two full-time custodians. Um, one is out, not sure, you know, of, of the return. And just even watching the, the first floor renovation at the Sono Library, it's just, it's, it's really difficult. Um, you have the custodians who have to go between the two libraries on a daily basis. They have to go to the dump, they have to be responsible, um, you know, for both buildings. Um, in the request of the lead last year, I listed the square footage of the buildings. I also listed, let's see. Oh, there we go. So I listed the square footage. I also, it wouldn't, for some reason, it wouldn't. I couldn't get it into this format. Um, but I do have it in Word if we need to see it. I list, listed the square footage, I listed um, our hours of operation. And I think it's very important to mention that we are open Monday through Sunday and not Monday through Friday. And um, so I just, I, I think we definitely, we definitely need one. Um, but if we're going to renovate uh, the main library and you know, we have, the custodians have to be in charge of both libraries, I think we need two. So um, I looked at um, online what the salary would be for an incoming. Um, and then I looked at what we, our most recent custodian hired last year. And so um, that person was hired at fifty-seven, one fifty. So um, so I have the custodian one, custodian two, for the fifty-seven, one fifty. Any questions before I move on? Okay, so um, we requested the marketing and communications coordinator. Last year, that position was not funded. Um, so I'm listing it again, per our work with um, Libraries Without Borders. That position is definitely needed um, in order for us to be branded as one library, although we do have different sections of the library, but to be branded as one library um, and to have some cohesiveness and just to take, you know, everybody's not gifted in the area of social media, press releases, and that sort of things. And we have some really wonderful programs going on, but it would just be nice to have someone who can focus or have a department that can focus on, you know, all of the wonderful things that we're doing and give it um, its due, because I'm not sure that all that we do is um, is really noticed. So to have someone who's skilled with, you know, getting the word out there in the community um, as well, you know, people who are online as well as those who are not online. I just think that it's just, it's tremendous, it's, it's really helpful.
Can you get a letter from library with um, Beyond Borders about the need for this position?
Sure, certainly. That's a good point. Um, and you know what, I should be writing this down and I didn't bring paper. I'm at a different computer, I'm just sort of lost today. Um, but that's a good point. Also, this library assistant position is still not filled despite I sent um, an email, I believe, last April. One outlining um, the need for the position, the fact that it hadn't been, that it hasn't been filled or posted. Um, and how much money um, they've saved without filling positions. Um, I did receive an email from oh, Tom Ellis, and he basically outlined to you that, you know, they, we had saved money um, and particularly saved money in the part-time budget as well. Um, and basically saying to go ahead and open it, it has not been opened. Um, the personnel director also sent an email, for whatever reason, it has not um, been opened. So that's something uh, we need to figure out why this position is not been opened, it's been two years. The access services manager.
And I, can I ask about that library assistant? So you're saying it's not, it's not.
And so it's in this year, it's in, so I did see it, I went online and I was able to see what's in um, you know, our active, what, what the active um, um, jobs are. And so it's in there, it just hasn't been posted. So it's funded and has been funded, it just has not been posted as yet.
So, so that wouldn't be a new.
That's not new, I just am bringing that to your attention. So no, it's definitely not a new position. Uh, access services manager was something that we requested. It was posted and then all of a sudden, you know, there's um, where's this money coming from? So from my understanding, um, it's, I guess somehow the ball might have been dropped between the change um, of personnel directors. So um, I know, Moina, you've been trying to have meetings on this, so I'm just, you know, putting that back in.
Yeah, I definitely think you should keep that on there for, so.
For sure. So um, with Tlesko, last year, we requested um, an additional five hundred dollars. Just, you know, for when meetings go over and when um, we have special meetings. So at present, we pay a hundred and twenty dollars per meeting um, for three hours and that three hours, um, you know, includes, I guess, the work that they have to do when they're typing up uh, the minutes. So um, I'm going to request an additional five hundred again, just you know, in anticipation of planning for the main library renovation. We may have to have special meetings, some of the meetings may go over. So I'm going to request um, an additional five hundred dollars. This year, I think we're okay, we only, I think we've got three special meetings, so we're okay. But I, I think we, we're going to need the additional. For the um, so last year, we requested um, something for our book budget, it's um, pre-processing so that the staff would not have to deal with processing. Um, this year, we're working with um, Baker and Taylor um, on something called One Click. And that's, you know, where the records are um, downloaded, however, um, let's see. So we still would like the, the pre-processing, the one click is not going to cost um, as much as we thought. The cost is going to come from um, Sierra, our triple I, that's our ILS. So that's where the cost is going to come. So I'm leaving that um, sixty thousand in again for this year. Um, we've had, I've had a meeting with um, someone who can make our, uh, it's a, it's a database and the, and our website would become ADA com- uh, compliant. So basically, you know, for people who are vision impaired, also for people, it's really interesting for people who have ADHD. Um, you know, they don't, you know, so that they can focus on one area. So there's not a lot of um, you know, competing things that might help have them lose their focus. And that database um, would be let's see, um, two thousand per year. We're also working on text message notifications, um, Twenty First Century again, so that we're, so people are late um, overdue, um, you know, we're billing them, we can text message them as opposed to just emailing. And that's what a lot of our, our patrons would like. So I'm actually waiting, I, I put in a placeholder for five thousand, I'm waiting for our IT person to let us know. Um, you know, what the cost will be, so again, she, I think she's waiting for um, Sierra, which is our ILS, you know, to let her know. Uh, Vicky Otis has a special request for um, gaming for teens, which is huge. And um, so basically, she just wants to update, update her technology. Um, so you know, they have the Nintendo, the Nintendo Switches. And so these are all um, gaming things, um, the projector cases, um, the Xbox and, you know, certain um, games. And her request, her total request came to forty-eight hundred. So what could possibly happen is we can put this in um, the technology budget as a one-time addition just for this year. Or sometimes what they do, they may just create another fund, uh, or another account, I'm sorry, um, for this particular request.
So that would be in the operating, not in the capital?
This is all operating.
Okay. Even though it's like one-time tech purchase, probably, right?
So for operate, for, for, um, for it to um, qualify for capital, it would need to be ten thousand.
Okay.
And so there, I have to speak to someone like, again, you know, without um, Dawn being here. Um, sort of the, to help, you know, with, with, what's immune is what's been paid and what hasn't been paid. The grounds account, I have to check on that and the, and um, two people in finance, you know, or, or the controller's office, you know, agreed to work with me um, until we get the position filled. So with this, uh, I believe it was the grounds account um, that we may have had a shortfall because I think they were taking um, the payment for parking from this account for, for the Eagles. So I have to look at that. If that's where there, if that's where that's coming from, then we need to put um, in, we probably need to put in uh, five thousand. Roughly five thousand dollars. Any questions?
No.
I will move on to the, fortunately, that one I wasn't able to make it nice, but luckily, we're only requesting the van. So uh, hold on one second, let me stop here. So can you see the screen, the new screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is from last year, so last year, we requested the van. We did not get the van, uh, we requested the um, digitization, which we did get. Um, so we requested um, the technology upgrades, we did receive that. Uh, we did not receive the exterior lighting. Um, Guardian did come over and they did, you know, um, you know, they made it a little better. But I think it could, you know, it could still be a bit better. And we also need to keep, keep up with um, with the, some bulbs we can change, some bulbs they change. So I think we just, you know, we need to do a better job of making sure that um, the bulbs are changed in a timely manner when they're out, particularly, you know, when it's dark outside. Uh, the first floor carpet for the main library, we did get. Um, let's see, the adult furniture for the reading room, we did get. Uh, the out front, outdoor furniture, we did not, the business center, we did not. Um, the integrated ILS system upgrade, we did. Um, and the ADA compliant doorknob handles are not. And you may recall in an email that I um, copied you all, and somehow there was ADA compliance in our budget. Um, but when I spoke to them, they said that wasn't supposed to be in our budget. So um, I guess it was taken out. So this year, um, we'll be requesting the van, which is now seventeen years old. And each time, you know, every year we put it out, the price goes up. There's been a change, um, a turnover in the fleet director, there's a new person. And I did request um, some quotes, I have not received them as yet. So this year, um, I did put in last year what the state contract prices were for gas-operated um, high roof. Um, for gas-operated, just a regular one, and the high roof is so the guys can stand up in the van and there's less pressure on their backs. Um, and then there was a high roof electric. So the city um, is, so what I saw on their website and a press release is that they're moving toward um, electric, you know, to reduce the carbon footprint. Um, electric and hybrid. So I think this year, we should just request the electric um, hybrid. Also, we can, you know, get a quote for, but now that we're, we will have the electric charging station at stations, rather, at the Sono Library. We um, you know, we would have the facility to actually charge um, the van. So as soon as I get those quotes, I will share them with you. And I, I do want to say that um, there was a meeting um, last April, um, April twenty-two, actually. And they were discussing um, the city fleet. And I just want to thank um, a shout-out to Dominique Johnson, who was on the council at the time, she's now a state rep. Um, she did um, mention the library, that the library should be included um, with the state, I mean, sorry, with the, with the city fleet, and she did ask about it in their April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two um, meeting of the common council. So that's.
So tha- that's all good, the only, the one thing that is outstanding and we need to basically um, meet with the city about this is that um, if, if I understand things correctly, the two million dollars that we had in for architectural services is going to be held for the parking lot. Uh, and so we would need um, presumably to request additional funds for architectural services if we're going to keep the timeline that Jess, Jessica and um, Alan presented to us um, at one of our recent meetings. So um, I am uh, reaching out to them to see if we can um, sit down and uh, and come up with a plan for how to do that. And I haven't heard back from them yet, but we'll, I'm, I'm sure that this is on their mind as well. So this is an important, an important, um, would be an important addition to our capital request if, if um, you know, if we're all still on the same page about this.
Perfect, okay. And, and just for the record, I want to state that we are pretty much caught up with our capital request. So a lot of times they will ask us, you know, before they give us um, new things, they'll ask us, you know, what's going on, excuse me, what's going on? Uh, where are we with our, you know, our previous request? So um, the, oh, excuse me, the GNOB room is completed, Sono is underway. Um, Neil has gotten the quotes for the um, the ma- the main library first floor carpet. Um, Cindy will be meeting with DMCO about the furniture, so we're, we're, we're in a good place.
Yeah. Yeah, we've made a lot of progress this year on, on a lot of those things, so. Kudos, Sherelle, that's a lot of hard work.
Kudos to the team, although it, it's, it's been really difficult not having the brands manager. Um, and now with Dawn being out, it's been, it's been a lot, a lot. But we're getting there.
So what about her position?
I have a couple of questions whenever, it's a good time.
Okay, just a second, Laurel was in the middle of speaking.
Oh, I just wanted to know what's up with, with Dawn's position.
So I have the the older posting, so I'm looking to upgrade it for Twenty First Century, looking to upgrade it.
Okay.
Update it, I just honestly just haven't had the time. I was even, I came in to work on Saturday, hoping that I would be able.
I was just gonna say that, I know you were there.
Everything, it's just, it's been crazy. So hopefully tomorrow, if I can get into my computer and get some other things done, um, I can work on that and share it with you all.
Okay.
I like to say, for the record, I would like to say.
A couple of questions on um, the comment that Sherelle made about changing the light bulbs um, uh, at, at Sono. Who does that? Do our maintenance men do that, or does the city do it?
It depends on which, with, what lighting we're talking about, in the back and the parking.
You said, you said cha- change, you said it's important to change the light bulbs in a timely fashion.
So, yeah, right, so in the, it just depends on who in the back. It's um, Guardian for the, I think it's, they call it cell light. So the lights in the parking lot will be Guardian and the lights um, on the side of the building would be our team, but we just have to get them, we have to get those lights from Guardian. And the lights in the front as well.
Okay, I, it's hard for me to hear, so our custodians do change some of the lights?
They do.
Okay, so, all right, so um, and, and then also on the custodian, we uh, we've really asked for uh, you know, three people for several years. And, and I think we have to highlight that, you know, as you did in your written statements about how many hours that, that there are. Um, that, you know, the seven days a week, everything that you put in there is, is the strong point. And rather than to say, rather than to say that the um, it's going to be uh, important for our construction because that's, that gives them an excuse to talk about that and say, oh, well, wait until, you, you know, you're not under construction. So wait until that happens. So that's, that's not good to, to focus on. It's the hours that these guys have to work, you know, seven days a week. And, and um, and opening, you know, and you've got all the hours there that you, so that's really, really good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then on the truck, on the truck, you have asked for the truck for three years and they keep turning it down, and you mentioned two years. It's, it's three years now that we, you know, that we've been asking for that van and didn't get it.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it, thank you, Patty.
Okay.
And to your point, I remember it was a strong point that the, the price just keeps going up.
Yep.
Yep. All right, I was gonna say, just for the record, and I don't know if anybody's been paying attention, but um, I think that Sherelle has been doing an excellent job considering that she has been wearing so many different hats. But we don't ever say, we appreciate you, Sherelle, we thank you for your service. So I think it's a good idea if we, right now, tell her just how we think she's doing. And I'm telling, I'm gonna start first, Sherelle, you're doing excellent job. I know it's a lot of work because I know you've been there, you're there all the time, all hours, and nobody realizes this. Um, so I thank you, uh, and you try to do what right for the library, and I really appreciate it. And I really appreciate you, and I hope that someone will recognize that and actually give you a raise for all the work that you've been doing. So anybody else want to say something to Sherelle?
Oh, my God, Janie.
Okay, good, let's, let's, let's do this.
I think, I think all of us are free, but, but what we need to do is to push to get these positions filled to make the job easier. So we've got to really focus on it and make it happen. This is, you know, this is ridiculous that we're not filling our positions, we gotta get them done.
And I think for me, I think that this, the frustrating part for me is I really wanted to focus more on strategic, on the strategic planning and things like that, rather than some of these other things. I mean, some of it, you know, obviously with Dawn, you know, we didn't know, you know, that was.
But, but, but I'm gonna say this, we are the board, we're supposed to be supporting her. Come on, guys, tell her what you think.
Janie, no, stop.
Ah, 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 come on, come on, come on. You can say, we appreciate you, Sherelle, what is the problem? I don't understand why y'all won't do that.
Janie, okay.
You noticed me that you told do it, but you always pick on things that's, that, that when she makes a mistake, you jump on it like a, like white on rice. Come on, guys, appreciate her. Let's go, let's go, I don't hear anybody.
All right.
Look at you, look at you.
Are we gonna?
I'm not saying anything, uh, that's, that's, that's disgusting. That really is disgusting, really, I'm sorry.
Janie, I, I, thank you, Sherelle, I.
Thank you.
Thank you, too. And I made sure at our last meeting to thanks Sherelle and the Sono team for.
Yeah, so anybody else? Let's go.
Sherelle, I think you're working uh, many hours on Saturday, and I think you're, you're working too much, and we need to get these positions filled.
Hundred percent.
Laura, what do you say?
And we.
I just said something, I said something a minute ago.
They save a lot of money on the. They can force people to say things, it's okay.
No.
I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Before that, I was to get to see it happen, so I'm in the building. And um, uh, half the time, I usually see Shrody on or off the elevator, so depending one direction or another. But um, um, Sherelle, you knew it wasn't going to be an easy job from the very beginning. And the one thing you've had to put up with, we're down almost half the staff we had just a few years ago. And uh, we've got a lot of people doing multiple jobs, and you've got to stay on top of it. And they don't realize, uh, the city itself doesn't realize the number of hours the library's open. The one thing, and people don't get impressed, the library puts the city's best foot forward for open seven days a week. Nobody else is doing that. Even the garbage men don't work on Sundays. And I do think there are times you have to keep your own work. So.
Well, Janie just did it. I didn't care, I didn't.
It doesn't hurt.
Good job. I'm proud of you all.
Well, let's let them know the number of hours that the budget.
That they're open. And I did highlight that, that we're open, that we're not open five days a week, that we're open seven days a week. Um, so, and then the, the other thing too is that I didn't mention, but. So, and then the, the other thing too is that I didn't mention, but it's in my narrative, is that on Sundays, you know, Sundays are optional. So we have one of our custodians who will work every Sunday and we have the other who doesn't want to work Sundays. So it'll be great, you know, one person can't, as much as he's gung ho, you know, his body is going to wear, wear out. And that's the other thing we do not want to do is, is, because we've got, you know, we have a part-timer and we have Michael McDonald and we also have Otis Weeks and they're both really good. And we have Mark, you know, Mark is having, you know, he's out right now. Mark is great when it comes to carpentry. And so, but right now, we are, and I don't know if people realize that. So when I get some phone calls every now and then, you know, talking about our positions, I, I get really annoyed because I don't think people realize, you know, we're all going through, you know, just typical, typical things we go through in life, but we're also working very hard. We have very dedicated staff and I don't, I'm not sure that people realize that. So I am at a point where I'm no longer willing to be quiet. You know, I've looked, I've studied the library enough to know what the library needs are. So even if you guys don't fight for the positions, I will be fighting myself, so.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so that's it for me. Once I can get into MUNIS tomorrow, Tom is usually very good. I have to give him a shout out, he's, he's just, he's wonderful to work with. I can send you a nicer copy, I can send you the MUNIS copy, which I'll send you what I have now, which is, you know, it's okay. But I can send you the MUNIS copy that will have all of my justification.
Sounds good. Okay, so can somebody make a motion to pass along the budget as, as we? Somebody want to make a motion?
I make the motion we pass the budget along.
Second.
We support the budget, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's move, move this, move this along.
Thank you all, appreciate the support.
Okay.
Thank you.
So cheers to twenty-four, twenty-five, yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Again, all in favor?
Aye.
You betcha.
Okay, thank you all.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Bye.